Call this workshop to order. And would we stand, please? Pledge of allegiance? Councilman Dewitt, would you lead the pledge of allegiance? Pledge allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Karamba, here. Councilman Dewitt?
Here.
Councilman Slacta? Mayor Simmons?
Here.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Present.
Councilman Gibson?
Here.
Councilman Horace?
Here.
Okay. At this point, we're going to have public comment. Public comment on any item? Come on up, Rick. I know you want to.
Don't be bashful. You don't know how to draw a crowd. Look at all these people here. I'm sure there's got to be an improvement in there somewhere, and I know you'll find it. Thank you very much.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any other public comment at this time? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to item five, on discussion of downtown. Carl, do you want to start us off here?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to be brief. Basically, just have a few opening comments, and that is that for the time that I've been here, the council's priority was to revitalize downtown. And we looked at various options to be able to do that, including constructing infrastructure that would be natural incentives for the private sector to become more involved in the downtown, which had been lacking for some number of years. We entered into, long story short, we'd entered into, we received some estimates from CH2M Hill in looking at a centralized stormwater system, as well as some of the other improvements we thought we would want to make. We used those as preliminary budget numbers in order to work out an agreement with the county to do a revenue-sharing agreement, which is in place today. We then went through a process of citizen input, had right, selected right construction. Right construction came along and did the design, and the project, as you know, is well under construction today. We're still about a little over a year from completion, but we're pretty pleased with what we have seen so far. Tonight, we would like to address a number of the issues that were on the workshop list of things to be covered. We're going to have Jay Sweet from Community Development come up first. And Jay, if you want to make your way up here to talk about the vision, the planning side of the downtown. Then we're going to have Matt Feeney talk to you about the infrastructure part. And also, additional speakers may come in and chime into various presentations tonight. And then finally, have Ann Wright talk about the financials of the downtown. So with no furthermore due, Jay.
Good afternoon. For the record, Jay Sweet, Community Development. And what I want to do is give a brief overview of how we got through the vision that we have for the downtown currently. In 1990, Lee County decided this could be an area for CRA, and it went through a variety of different processes, and little things happened. Some sidewalks got built, some streetlights got installed, but there's never really this unifying vision that happened. In 2000, of course, City's Incorporated, in 2003, the city came up with a Parks Master Plan. And that's really the first plan that really started to put a cohesive idea down there. And then, of course, what we call the RMPK Plan came out in 2005, which is the basis of the corridor plan that we have. The big thing that happened, though, was in 2012. In 2012, the council adopted a vision, something that actually you could see what it was that the city was trying to accomplish. And with that, they adopted some renderings. This rendering is a bird's-eye view, if you will, of the bridge overlooking the river, the type of architecture we'd be expecting, an old Florida fill. You'd have shops on the ground floor, apartments above, a mixed-use approach, a very walkable approach. This is a different rendering, sort of, if you're standing on the bridge, what it would be like if you looked through. And again, the idea here was to present architectural elements that we've been looking for and to show that we're looking for a sense of place. The third rendering that the council commissioned was a proposed roundabout at Raggedelle River, Pennsylvania. This rendering's actually not as good as it should have been because we don't want parking in the front, and they showed cars. But other than that, the other elements that it, that it hits, or I think really hits the mark, the walkability, the architecture, the pedestrian-centric concept rather than the car-centric concept. Ironically, as things have developed, this is a rendering that Mosaic, or the Dean Street Project submitted as part of their development approval. Looks sort of similar. They actually took the vision, embraced it, and if you see, there's a two-story building up against the road, a public space just to the north of it, and then the theme of the type of architecture being carried on throughout the development as you go back through there. One of the things that is important, this is the RMPK Plan, which is still our plan, and if you look at the plan, you'll see that we have all these different subareas. And those subareas address mixed use, they address the single-family, and we've made a lot of modifications over the years to these, keeping this a living document, keeping this as we saw that there were changes that needed to be made, the most recent of which was here in the Benita Beach Road corridor overlay with overlays with the downtown, where we made changes to the use to make sure that we didn't get highway use encroachment into the downtown, that we maintained that fill. That's been something that we've done. And as you go up the corridor, we have constantly been tweaking the uses, tweaking the other elements. One of the things that happened earlier in 2012 was that we came up with architectural standards and incorporated into our code. And so there's a lot of, a lot of those things been incorporated. What's happened since then is we've had several major developers come in with projects, and we have others that are out there talking about their projects. The ones that have come in, as I just pointed out, was Dean Street, which is this property here. They are in for development approval right now with actual construction plans. They've signed the agreements that was part of their PD, and so that's an ongoing development. We have the Longitude development, which is here, and they are still on track. They have pushed their, I talked to them yesterday, they've pushed their schedule back about six months, in part because our road construction is taking longer because of the oil tanks and all the other things, the issues that we've had discovered. They don't want to come out of the ground and have a project that's completed with the roads still being tore up. They, they need that all to come together, so they've pushed their schedule back because of that. So, what else is happening? One of the other things that's happened is that at the, whoops, my bad, up here, just south of Terry Street and north of the river, we have Maria's Restaurant. A gentleman by the name of Tony Masalino, one of his companies, bought that restaurant, and they've also acquired all the property around the Speedway Station, the Old Hess Station, and the property on the other side of Center Avenue. And we have talked with their consultants, and you'll see that it's in a couple of different zones. And I would anticipate that they will be in shortly to ask for some modifications either to the zoning or to reassign some zoning, that they want to build four-story condos over parking, over part of it, mixed-use over part of it, and build a park as part of their, their public improvements. They also are just north of the Wonder Gardens, and something that the owners are trying to do up there, that who knows, may take the city to interject, but they're trying to work a deal just north of the Wonder Gardens that they can have some common parking and take little pieces of property, combine them together, and create a parking lot. And that's something that is actively going on. We're not involved, but we know that the property owners are. I have talked to over half the property owners, and there's, there is one person right now who doesn't want to play with it the same way they do, but eventually, it's one of those things, I think it's in the best interest of everybody to, to look at. So, one of the other things that's happened in the downtown is that the council saw fit to have an economic development incentive program, and those incentives included facade grants and landscape grants. To this date, we have either completed or in process or have received applications for 10 of grants. I can run through them quickly. The Quinn property is down on Tennessee Street, it is completed. Tina Belay's property is the grandpa's pizza. They repainted the building, cleaned it up, added some different signage and lighting. Pilz is actually one of Tina's family properties. It's the upholstery shop that, if you look, it's been resited, it's been painted, new signage, took a metal building, and now it looks like a wood, old Florida structure. The Old Town Development is sheer unity, and they're, they are in the process right now of completing their improvements, painting, restoring doors, windows, so forth. The Casky Project's an interesting project. It is the building immediately to the south of the Dollar Store, up just north of Terry Street. And if you go by and look at that, and look at that project, he has embraced it. His landscaping is incredible from what he's done there. He has changed the doors, he's changed signage, took down a pole sign, he's done a lot of things, and he has a thriving tenant in there right now, in that building. We go to Fenderdall, which is frankly probably one of the worst-looking buildings on, on Old 41. It's the apartments that are just to the north of the, of the river, across the street from Wonder Gardens. He has painted his first building and second building, it's in the process of being painted, and now he's getting ready to start his facade treatments. And we anticipate quite a change in the look of that building from, from what we're doing. Jimmy Harris has his property where it's actually in the corridor, but it's actually on Terry Street, and he's in the process of doing improvements still to that property. It was a restaurant, it's still a restaurant, but they've cleaned it up, painted it, put a new metal roof on it, again, bringing it into the old Florida style. What we have, and the Buffalo Chips was the very first one to come in, and they did some painting and landscaping on theirs. The two that are, I find, most interesting, the other to the left, Outdoor Kitchens, which is just across from Park, New York Art. They've been there a long time, very successful business. They're coming in, they're getting, they're spending a significant amount of money. Our grants pale compared to what they're going to spend down there. They're actually creating some public space on their property for people to sit. Trellis work all the way out, even over the right-of-way to shade the sidewalk. I think it's going to be a very interesting, they just made that application this week. And the same way, Magnus, which is the old Nelson's Plaza, they have done something similar, they've submitted their application this week. So there's a lot of things that are happening, there's a synergy that's starting to happen down there with these grants and, and so forth. I like to use this one as an example. On the left is the Quinn property before they did anything. On the right is it today. If you look, there was no landscaping in here, and there was a driveway that came in here. The driveway's gone, it's all green area, there's a big green area here with palm trees. The building in the back had been painted, the windows had been painted white, it was just a warehouse. It's now a business, and there's all kinds of glazing. It's been painted. The entire site's been paved, a lot of it was dirt before. Huge improvement. And, and it is one of the ones, I think, that when you look at it, when you look at the old picture and the new picture, it's like, wow, what a difference this incentive money can make. And the only incentive money they got was landscaping, which was the $5,000 grant. And I think they put about $30,000 into the improvements when they did it. So it does get people to spend money on their property, and that's one of the things I think that is important to, to bring forward. We talked about the projects, Longitude and Dean Street Mosaic. Ironically, the Mosaic project, because of their approval and saving the Good Bread or the Dixie Moon, is going to create another project, the Lemon Tree. So we're actually spawning one project into another project in order for them to complete their, their vision. And again, all of this is in the same vision that we've talked about. One of the things that I try to keep track of, so that when I'm talking with potential developers downtown, is what's been happening with the sales. Every one of these properties has sold since the city started the visioning process of the downtown improvements. Once the city had the money, committed to the money, committed that I had hired Wright to start their visioning for the design, these properties have all sold. I could average them, it's way over $1 million an acre. The significant increases in values have happened downtown since this has happened. And the good news is, people have held them for a long time, got rid of them, some of them didn't believe in the vision, some of them did, but the people who have bought them are buying because they've bought into the vision, that they see that there's a, a value, a potential down there. But what does this really mean? And what I can tell you from my experience both on this side of the development scheme, on the other side of the development scheme, development needs confidence. And I think that's the one thing that this council has done since 2012, they have still confidence of what's going to happen downtown. They've taken a plan that's been unwavering, little things here and there, but basically they've maintained the vision. This is the vision, and they've maintained it. At the same time, they want to make sure that we retain the flexibility that we have as we've gone down there, and we've said, well, wait a second, can we have, can staff give a foot variance in height for the right architectural design so that they can meet the code? Can the staff, can we modify things a little bit here for landscaping? And the council has seen fit to pass ordinances, and that flexibility remains. And because of that flexibility, there's a lot of confidence that not only is the city having its vision, but the staff is willing to work with the development community to make these things happen. And so that's, that's a very important thing for the development community to understand that that confidence is there. The other thing is that I find interesting is, I put on here, remember Gibbs, not NCIS, but remember Gibbs, and that is the Gibbs Report. Every time when I have a pre-app with somebody, I say, have you looked at our website? Have you looked at the Gibbs Report? 60 to 70% of the time, they say, no. So why haven't you looked at it? Well, we didn't know it was there. Every time I have a second meeting with these people and they've read it, they are thanking us for having that report. That report contains so much information, good information, that can be used to help get financing, to help direct them in the right way as they design their building and their sites. It's, it is a very important tool that we have in our arsenal to use as part of this visioning downtown. It provides the economic confidence of what can happen down there. And I think it's very important that we understand as a staff that we remember that Gibbs, we remember the Gibbs Report, and that we make sure that everybody we talk to understands that that's available for them. The city paid a lot of money for that. And the other thing is, is that whenever we talk with people, we want them to understand the commitment. And, you know, we talk about the 18 million, the 20 million that the city has committed and so forth, but how much is it really? The library, how much are they going to commit? How much has BSU committed to upgrade the lines for water, for fire? We start adding all those things up, where are we, 38 million, 40 million? There's a huge commitment down there, and I think that that's the other thing that, as a staff, we have to do, is make sure they understand that totality of that commitment, that it's not just the 20 million, it's more like 40 million. That inspires confidence and helps us maintain the vision and helps everybody else buy into our vision. Thank you.
Any questions for Jay, the council?
Mike? Mike, well, when you said remember Gibbs, it reminded me that during his presentation, he did mention not to put any trees right in front of businesses. Yet I know with the project right now, we're placing trees in front of businesses, so something maybe we can look at, or shift the trees to something skinnier like a palm tree instead of a shade tree if it's right in front of a business.
Okay. Peter?
Jay, great job as always. One question, which is, those first two slides, the photos, the renderings, we have been kicking around for years. How are they, are they tied to some form-based code or what we have in the code? So for example, you know, you mentioned Mosaic, and I'm thrilled that Longitude's going down there, but Longitude does not look like one of those first two slides. I don't think it does. So what of that? In other words, we have a vision, but is that vision driven by the tools that you guys have to work with?
And, and, and not to be flippant, but I will say, yes, no, and maybe.
Okay.
Okay? Staff definitely uses those slides as an example. But when you get down to the code that we have and the elements that are in there, while it's old Florida, there are certain elements they have to, to put into it, and there's a certain amount of glazing they have to do. And so we're not always going to wind up with that exact look. One of the things is, you know, old Florida, I've joked in the past about old Florida, which old Florida? You know, old Florida from the 20s, the 50s, the 70s, which old Florida are you talking about when you talk about old Florida? And that's the reason it's important to have a rendering to, to sort of, although it's not codified, too codified, if you will, for lack of a better word, so that people see what the vision is. Longitude is a perfect example. They came in and said, you know what? For, for the type of building we're doing, it doesn't quite work. We, we, we really want a Key West slash old Florida tobacco warehouse, modern. Okay? And so we looked at that and said, do you meet all the following elements? And of course, we had the city architects, you know, look at it and say, yes, we meet these following elements. And so the rendering is really more of a guide, but it is, it is a tool that staff uses in its arsenal. Yes, improvements could be made to the code, and that's the reason we've been back so many times. And I think that we'll be back again shortly with, with more recommendations of tweaks that need to be made. Short of going to a really full-blown form-based code, that becomes difficult because there's so many elements. There's some really great examples of form-based codes out there. But when you look at them, and I'll take the Miami 21 code as an example, it's probably the premier form-based code, but when you look at that code, you look at all the different transects they have, and we don't have as many transects, which are basically area outliers as you step down and so forth, to make that level of code work. So the question is, how do we incorporate it? I think so far, we've done a good job. Could it be done better? Absolutely. But I think it's also where staff has really impressed upon people the right way and the wrong way to do some things. Now, I will tell you, as an example, this week, we had somebody come in on a vacant lot north of Terry, they wanted to do something totally against the code. Big setbacks, parking in front, all the things that we've said we don't want. Said, here's what you got to do. And, and I gave them some examples, said, you can go up here and look, do this and this, don't do this. When you see this, that's not what we're looking for. And I think that's one of the things that staff, with the guidance of council, has to really be able to say, give people direction, because architects seem to get it.
Okay.
Landowners don't always get it. So it is difficult.
Thank you.
Fred? You okay? Amy?
When I was reviewing some of the other aspects of what we were concerned about for the downtown, I don't know if it would be appropriate to talk about them here, but, you know, any plans to incorporate with the historic overlay and how does that interact with what we're doing down here?
I think that's something that's to be determined, sort of from the council's direction, of where, where would you like that historic overlay to be? I think that staff has always thought that's a good idea. But you pick, you know, in most areas, you pick a block, a tract of land or whatever, and create a village or a historic, and I think that that is a great idea, but really looking for council direction as to where you'd want to put that.
And have we had any influence from the Benita Springs Downtown Alliance? I know they came up with some proposals. How does that integrate with some of the proposals that they came up with?
Okay. Forgive me to make sure, is the Alliance, the Gilkey Masalino? Yes. And they're the ones that are trying to put the, the parking behind Maria's north of the Wonder Gardens. They're, they're trying to put that together. Yes, we've had some interface with them.
So would it be useful to, for us to sort of coordinate or to at least be more aware of what they, I mean, they gave us a report, but we never discussed it or anything?
If I might, I'm personally a member of the Alliance. The city's a member of the Alliance. Actually, the city gets to vote, I don't. But, but the bottom line is, is we, we attend their meetings on a regular basis, we're aware of what they're asking for. The group that I see there, represented there, has bought into the vision. Now that we're showing some results down there, I think there's some excitement in the group. They tend to be asking, if you've seen from the list, they tend to be asking for things like connection, connectivity to our website, can we do a kiosk? In other words, things to advance the downtown well beyond just construction. And we are considering those, and of course, certainly will need direction from council on what you would like us to do.
Okay.
Is there anyone else? No? Greg?
The only couple of questions I have, what about, sorry. And again, great, great presentation. The properties that are down there that are, I wouldn't call them vacant, but older properties like the old Transmission Shop, are, is Communities or Neighborhood Services looking into seeing who owns them, maybe getting the EDC to say, hey, here's some open businesses down there? Because I just know that some of those, we're going to have this great, great downtown, and we're still going to have pockets of eyesores, I guess you'd call it.
Ironically, I have a pre-app on the 13th for the old Transmission Shop. I don't know if what they want to do will work there, but we've had some discussions, and we've asked them to come in for a pre-app to discuss. That area is actually 7A, which is a hospitality area, and the people want to do some glassblowing, and depending upon if it's going to be a tourist attraction or not, it could, it could fit, it may not fit. But there is, there are people looking.
Okay.
And, yeah. And of course, I'll let you, I'll let you ask Frank about Neighborhood Services. I'll let him step in that. I won't.
Sorry about that, Frank. Neighborhood Services is like the fire inspectors. It's always bad news when you come through the door. No, that was, that was code enforcement. This is Neighborhood Services.
Oh, yeah, that's right, that's different, right?
The new image, I'm smiling now. Frank Cassidy, Director of Neighborhood Services. The quick answer is yes, we have a pretty aggressive campaign doing that.
AKA code enforcement.
That's just one of the small things we do. It gets us in trouble. But we are out there pretty aggressively in the business districts across the city, and when we identify the property you're talking about, as a matter of fact, just got off the phone with the guy who put in the application this morning, Mitchum, Mr. Mitchum is his name, and we're coordinating the efforts with him and Community Development, and we work very closely with Community Development to align, when we hear somebody talking about what, what their idea is that come in the vision, and we get them involved with Community Development. So the, the quick answer is yes.
Okay. Good, thanks. I just know that there's some pockets down there that...
Absolutely.
I've been vacant a while.
I was going to say, and I think my, my questions have been pretty well answered by previous questions, so Jay, anything else to add in terms of, you know, you're talking about the mood of the Alliance, the, the business mood down there, or Mike, or, you know?
I think there's probably two things that are worth just a quick mention, and that is, number one, maintaining our consistency that, you know, our vision is our vision. Doesn't mean it can't be modified and tweaked, because I think it should be. As we see things that don't work, we should change them. We find things that work well, we should, you know, add to them. But, you know, it's, it's when you don't have a vision and you're wandering all over the place that people lose confidence, and of course, I think that's part of it. The other thing is, is that realizing that there are some changes that are going to have to happen in our plan if we want, if we find it desirable for Mr. Masalino, the properties that he, he's purchased, to turn that more into residential, because the 3A doesn't allow residential. It's not necessarily a bad idea to have more residential. I'm actually a fan of having more residential downtown, because I think the more feet on the street, the more people are in the shops. I think that's a good thing typically. But that would require amending our plan, and fortunately or unfortunately, depending on your point of view, our plan is actually codified in our comp plan. So when we go to modify the plan, we have to modify our comp plan. Just the way it was set up, there's nothing wrong with that, but just so that you understand that that's a process we'd have to, to take, and some of the people have been a little dissuaded when we explained that to them, but that's the way that it was adopted and put in place. The other thing is, is that we've been having some interest of individuals wanting to be added into the downtown. The other thing is, is that we've been having some interest of individuals wanting to be added into the downtown. And, um, I will... For example, down here, across Mitty Beach Road, and then the property that's adjacent to the Lowe's property, the property owners of those properties have recently, one of them today, as a matter of fact, which is the reason it wasn't part of this, have come in and said, we would be interested in being part of the downtown. And so, whether that's a good idea or not, we need to evaluate. But I think that their intent is, is, is noteworthy. That they see value to being in the downtown. That they see that there's a synergy, that being connected with the downtown, being part of the downtown, uh, process is, is beneficial to them.
Which parcel is that, Jay?
The, um, over off Harold Street, this is the Lowe's parcel.
Oh.
So the next, the next eight acres over, uh, they're interested. And then where the Amazon Shed people are, all the way back to, uh, where Cosway Lumber, uh, they're interested. And they're obviously interested into the Flex 11 industrial, sort of hip types thing we're trying to do there with, you know, breweries or whatever. And he's actually interested in doing high-end condominiums into the downtown.
Okay, great.
So...
And, and Jay and I talked today, actually, and probably makes some sense to consider putting in the, the dog track as well. Because we've always talked about that being eventually the, the south anchor for the downtown. Especially if we can get the slots going there.
Right, right, right.
So there, there's a lot of people who have interest in our downtown.
Right. No, that's great. Council, anything else for Jake? Yeah.
Just real quick, when you talk about amending the comp plan, we can be, we can make that as, as specific as we can, just for that downtown area. It's not opening up the whole can of worms of the comp plan.
You can amend just, you know, the, the little, but just understand that it is...
Three A or whatever we're speaking of.
Right. But, but what it does do, uh, and, and here's where it sort of is, hamstrings us a little bit. If it's a straight zoning, the process is quicker for, for the developer. Because it would take the comp plan, it's a longer, a little bit longer process. But just so everybody understands that.
Great, great. Thanks, Jay.
Anything else? Great. Um, right now, I'd like to introduce Matt Feeney, our Public Works Director, to talk about the infrastructure part of the project. Matt?
Good afternoon, Council. I'm Matt Feeney, the Public Works Director. We, we've, uh, I'm gonna give you a, a brief update and turn it over to Andy Powell from Wright Construction, so that we can go into a little more detailed description of the project. But since we last talked about the project, a lot of progress has been made. Uh, we've overcome some of the, uh, short-term delays in terms of fuel tanks and things that were uncovered at the start of the project. Uh, I'd say we've regained schedule. We're, we're in no danger or jeopardy of, of missing the September 2017 deadline for the project.
How many have we hit, Matt, so far?
Twelve altogether.
I lost track of a couple. Thanks.
Thank you, Old, Old Florida.
They were, they were at two different locations. One is, uh, one on the east side of the road and one on the west side of the road. We hit the ones on the west side of the road in the beginning, uh, when we started with BSU's portion of the project with their water line. And then uncovered the other ones doing some electrical trenching. But now, we, we've made a great progress. And, um, right now, the primary effort of work has been at the Pennsylvania-Ragsdale intersection with the Roundabout, which you, uh, will see here very shortly. Uh, some photos of that. But the, the project's about thirty percent, or thirty-five percent currently, and, um, and on track. Uh, one thing I do want to point out before I turn it over to Andy is I, I have been in contact with, uh, LeTran folks to talk about utilization of our bus stops. Uh, they are using the northbound stops as intended and as designed. And will utilize the southbound stops as soon as we're able to pour some sidewalk there. Then that stop will be open for their use. And that's really been a function of FPNL's underground conversion agreements, which are still, we're awaiting. But, uh, FPNL has worked with us and provided conduit. So that conduit installation work has started, and it started this week and will continue on. And that'll allow us to pour sidewalk on the west side of the project where currently it's not been finished. So it's all good news. And with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Powell to start the presentation from right.
Thank you, Matt.
Good afternoon, everyone. Again, my name's Andy Powell with Wright Construction. Um, I'm gonna start, hopefully I've got this right here, uh, just by reiterating some of the original project goals, just to refresh people's memory. Uh, I'll then go through an agenda and, and we'll turn, and give you some updates on the project and turn it over to some of our consultants and, uh, part of our team members to update you on their parts of the project, as well as Bonita Springs Utilities. Uh, first and foremost, uh, we understand and recognize that this is an economic redevelopment of downtown. And in that vein, uh, the, the, the goals of the project were area-wide drainage and water quality improvements, as well as water storage, uh, improvements for the enhancement of the, uh, properties in downtown. Uh, other goals were undergrounding the, uh, overhead utilities, FPNL that Matt mentioned, as well as Comcast, CenturyLink, and others. Uh, opening up the river views of the Imperial River and Oak Creek, uh, giving it an open spacious view and, and highlighting some of those assets. And making a pedestrian-friendly streetscape, as well as enhancing the, the roadways with a complete streets concept. The final kind of asset, uh, or aspect of the job was to provide as much additional down pound parking as we could possibly do in achieving the goals above that. Uh, again, our agenda, uh, we're, I'm gonna talk about the status of the project, the schedule, project phasing. Kim with Bonita Springs Utilities will give us an update on the BSU project. Uh, we'll talk a little bit about our public information, landscaping, the Terry Street Roundabout, uh, and Imperial River Bridge, and again, the drainage and, and, and the drainage enhancements. With that being said, as Matt said, uh, we're about thirty-five percent complete currently. Uh, we anticipate being at the sixty-five percent or above level by the end of this year. Generally speaking, we're talking about having the, uh, substantial completion of the roadways south of the Imperial Bridge, uh, and Imperial River, rather, uh, by the end of this year. Uh, currently completed work is Old Forty-One from Wilson to Childers, Wilson Street, Reynolds Street, Felts Avenue from Wilson to Childers. And we have maintained a contingency balance so far in the project of six hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. Uh, current work in progress is Old Forty-One Road, uh, from the roadwork from north of Ragsdale and, and Pennsylvania to Hampton. Uh, drainage installation in that area is complete. Roadway is currently being constructed. And the Roundabout that Matt mentioned is, is under construction. This is some photos from yesterday of the pavers going into that Roundabout area at, uh, Ragsdale, Pennsylvania. Uh, Childers Street is nearing completion. Uh, we are installing, uh, power and communications conduit now, uh, that we've gotten the, uh, the conduit from FPNL. And we're prepping for the curb and the sidewalk work on the west side of Old Forty-One, uh, south of Wilson at this time. Uh, with that, I'm gonna kind of turn it over to Kim, let her talk about, uh, well, let me, I'm sorry, the phasing plan. Got out of sequence here. Uh, we've included this in your package. Uh, the Phase One area is the area that we, I previously mentioned as being complete. We're currently wrapping up Phase Two, uh, with the Roundabout and the, uh, the roadwork, uh, south of Pennsylvania and Ragsdale. Uh, you'll notice we'll be moving into Phase Three, uh, shortly. Uh, I think we're about, uh, six weeks off from moving into Phase Three. Uh, the yellow, I, I wanted to kind of explain that a little bit. We're picking off those side streets of the Felts, uh, roadway as we can while we maintain access to the businesses. And, and it becomes a little bit tricky now and then to maintain those access. But that, that work will be included in the subsequent Phase Three and Phase Four work. And with that, I'll turn it over to Kim to update on BSU.
Good afternoon. Kim Hoskins from Bonita Springs Utilities. Uh, well, I, I hope I don't confuse you with my next slide, because I realize that the phasing plans are a little different for us as opposed to the city. Um, but our part in this, uh, so far, in Phases One and Two for us, Phases One and Two are both south of the river. Uh, we've replaced and upsized approximately sixty-nine hundred linear feet of water main and added hydrants in the following corridors on Old Forty-One from Wilson Street to Tennessee, uh, Felts Avenue from Wilson Street to Dean Street, and then those cross streets in between. Um, so essentially that, all those blocks. The upgrades, we went, um, from eight and ten-inch pipe on Old Forty-One to twelve-inch. And then on Felts Street, we've upsized a variety of sizes of pipes to, um, a little bit more consistent ten-inch. Um, and then we've also added, um, some hydrants where we didn't have any before. Um, we've also relocated approximately nine hundred linear feet of the wastewater collection and transmission system due to the underground conflicts either posed by our relocated water main or the drainage system. Um, our work south of the river will be substantially complete mid-June. As far as our construction costs go, um, Phase One, which was from the river to approximately Ragsdale, was about one point five million. We're approximately ninety-eight percent complete on Phase One. And our projected estimated costs, um, will be a little over a million. Phase Two, um, I'm not gonna say it came at us quickly, but we, as you all are aware, we encountered some, some unforeseen things in Phase One. And, and with the schedule moving, there was still some uncertainty. So, um, the prices were a little high for, for us. But we continued moving forward, realizing that hopefully we'll recognize some savings and won't have to use all of the money in the guaranteed max price because with Wright's assistance, and, and thankfully, um, we didn't have as many conflicts as we thought we would. Our Phase Two, um, completion, we're about ninety percent. And we estimate our projected costs to be about one point three seven five. So our total guaranteed max price, um, originally for Phases One and Two was four point seven million. To date, we've spent two point two. Phase Three for us is everything north of the, uh, north of the river, um, at about five hundred thousand dollars. So our total projected estimated cost of construction will come in just under three million. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name's Chris Sello, Sello Mollner Associates. Just an update on public information. Well, we've been working closely with Laura and Matt Feeney with the events that were held, you know, last season and continue to do that so that everything went smooth. And we provided support and, um, and help to, to the event coordinators to make their events go smoothly. Um, I regularly visit, uh, the businesses in the detour area. And sometimes I stop by and see people that are out of the detour area just to see how things are going and if there's anything we can do to improve things. I coordinate with all the business during the water line installation and driveway closure so that nobody's really impacted, you know, or we impact them as least amount as possible. Um, if you've been in the area, then you've seen the banners that we've done. It's been a huge hit for the businesses. Um, they really appreciate that. This, we have not done that in twenty years in the business. So, um, it's, that's being used on other projects now. So I'm really glad that those worked out for them. Um, and we coordinate with the businesses on adjusting the signs as we're changing the detour up. I have a pretty big email, um, database that we send out detour information or any kind of updates that we're doing, newsletters. We have, um, an update flyer that's gonna be mailed and emailed out, um, next week. And then we've been providing detour maps to all the businesses so that they can either email them to their customers on how to find them or hand them out, uh, when people come in. Things are going pretty well out there. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Kevin Mangan, uh, with Stantec, a landscape architect on the project. Here to speak about directed landscape change that has, has come to us and come to the team. We have, uh, currently on the project, uh, ninety street trees that have been specified as, uh, high-rise live oak. As you all know, we're in a, a corridor in, in an old downtown area that sits within a, an oak hammock. The directed change has come to us is to move those ninety oak trees out of the project and replace them with a Shady Lady Black Olive. Uh, the cost differential, if we were to place the same size oak tree with the same size Black Olive to the job is a thirty thousand dollar addition. Uh, the cost of the Black Olive being more expensive than the Shady Lady at this size. When, uh, we've asked the, uh, uh, landscape contractor to provide us what that spec would be at a no net cost, that would be a twelve-foot tree versus the twenty-foot that we have specified. Uh, that twelve-foot tree basically would sit here in, uh, this room with its top basically at the ceiling. So the original oak tree, uh, high-rise oak named specifically because of its character. Uh, it is a vertical-growing character you see on the left. The Shady Lady, uh, at the same size, and the reason I, I, I will say that, you'll notice the curb line is basically in the same position here. So we're, we're always standing, in essence, in the same relationship. Uh, here in the middle, that thirty thousand dollar addition would give you that Shady Lady. And again, same relationship, uh, this is what the twelve-foot Shady Lady, uh, would look like at no additional cost. So, uh, under the directed landscape change, uh, where, where we have specified the oak tree, uh, the oak tree is a, a native Florida tree. Uh, and is also, uh, one of the Florida-friendly canopy trees. It is a slow-growing, uh, species, uh, which goes to, uh, less maintenance over time. Uh, and, uh, ultimately makes it a, a, a stronger, uh, tree. This is natural, the slower-growing materials are, typically the stronger they are to winds and other things. Uh, we do have, uh, leaf litter drop that we have to, uh, attend to in maintenance. Uh, but again, where I spoke to the survey earlier, the vertical canopy growth. So we, we've got a hammock where it's naturally involved. The vertical canopy growth goes in a large part to what community development has begun to, um, do in their codes and moving buildings to basically the setback line, a build-to line. And that vertical canopy keeps that tree from not growing out in its width, but up vertically in the air. Uh, allows for, uh, visibility and many other things, uh, including, uh, the proximity to the buildings, uh, in, in the street that we're, uh, we're dealing with. The Shady Lady, on the other hand, is not a Florida native. Uh, it is a Florida-friendly canopy tree, but it is not a native tree. Uh, it's got a faster growth rate, uh, will be susceptible to more maintenance in time through trimming. And again, a bit weaker wooded in winds and other events that we, uh, we need to take care of here. The stain, uh, is, uh, something that, uh, you know, we did not have this tree in this project. And here, outside the Survey Cafe, this concrete work is forty-five days old. It's a Black Olive that's on adjacent, uh, private property and is already producing this staining on the new concrete work. And so the Black Olive, as a species, uh, over time stains hardscape surfaces, sidewalks, cars, clothing, and the other things that, uh, are under the influence of its canopy. And again, the spreading canopy growth is really a contradiction of what we're trying to get to in the street. When the buildings come up to the setback line, we want that vertical habit to be part of it. And, uh, you know, the street tree is, is great, because you can look at any of these, uh, pictures, even the, even the Black Olive is doing it here for us, uh, giving us those, those puddles of shade. Really makes the climate of the building, of the sidewalk, of the parked car, of the street much friendlier, uh, to be, uh, be part of in, in this environment. Uh, so with that, I'm going to turn this over to Michael, the Roundabouts.
So it sounds like, uh, excuse me, it sounds like you don't like the Shady Lady.
Right.
No. In fact, let me just go back. I think the Shady Lady
Yeah.
is an appropriate, uh, tree, not in a street condition because of the staining and these qualities. But it really, you know, you can go, um, uh, go out and you see the Shady Lady in, um, uh, berms and buffers and things where it does, does a really good job.
Right.
Screening and, and attending to those other things that, uh, you know, buffers and buffer landscapes want to attend to.
A recollection of the conversation that happened a few weeks or months... A recollection of the conversation that happened a few weeks or months ago about the oak was a concern with it buckling the sidewalk eventually.
Yeah. Uh, a- as far as buckling sidewalks go
Right.
or root zones.
Right.
It can happen with palm trees, it can happen with street trees. And one of the things that we're doing here uh, to uh, guard against that, uh, and really sort of a best practice in, in the profession as it is today, is using root barriers and chemically and/or physically, which you have both options.
Right.
Uh, helping direct roots in a direction to grow rather than uh, some of the buckling issues that you talk about. So the project is, has incorporated these things uh, uh, you know, as part of the landscape and the installation.
So would we be better off staying with the oak trees then?
I think you immediately take ninety trees and you remove that staining problem throughout. Uh, and I appreciate the comment earlier, but um, you know, palm tree in this environment? I mean, look at the, look at the cover slide, I think you may all have the package. Look at, look at the, look at the shade that is put down on the street and the sidewalks. Um, and given the vertical nature, uh, you're moving away from all of those things. And, and I think the, that high-rise oak is absolutely the right uh, tree. It's within the context of the larger community, the, the downtown area and the neighborhood it's in, it's, it's good, it's the right one.
Question. Does this high-rise, doesn't it shed the same kind of stuff that the other oak tree does? The live oak?
It, it has its, it has its, it has its leaf litter and, and all that needs to be cleaned.
Yeah, I think you're being generous. You track that in, it'll get on your carpets, it's going to be a maintenance problem for the store owners.
Uh, I, again, I, I, I know that's there. I know that is part, is to be part of the maintenance ongoing operations and maintenance. But uh, you know, the staining cannot be removed ultimately.
Is there another tree that would be better than the, than the olive tree? That wouldn't have that litter problem of the oak tree and also the problem it has with the roots?
No, I think the oak tree, again, because of the context of the community it's in, is the right tree. And the vertical nature and the growth habits, they, I mean, you know, the truth be told, uh, the reason the Black Olive is not part of, you know, this plant palette for this project is because some of the exist, you know, characteristics we talked about.
Uh, Mayor Council, based on what you've heard tonight, um, is there any change that you're directing here because um, the change to the Shady Lady will continue to be made unless Council wishes to reconsider that directive?
Well, I, having seen the professional advice, I would surely consider taking that advice and acting on it. I mean, the way you're presenting it, is it Kevin?
Kevin, yes.
It's not even close to a toss-up. I mean, you're basically strongly recommending for the oak.
Yes.
And strongly recommending against the Shady Lady. I mean, you're being polite about it.
In, in this application, yes.
Yeah.
How often do you have to treat the roots so that they don't become a problem?
Well, again, with the root barrier, uh, the ideal situation is you never have to do that. Now that, you know, the truth be told is, is that every now and then you may find a root that you have to address. Again, it's, it's an issue in basically any tree that you would choose. Root growth is something the tree naturally wants to do. And it also exists in, in palms as well. Uh, and you know, ultimately, um, you know, what the, what the, what the tree is doing or the palm is doing is looking for oxygen, it's looking for water, it's looking for space to grow, so it's, it's, it's after all of these things. Uh, it, it's not just a spatial issue, if you will. Um, but you know, whether or not you had Species A, Species B, Species C, the, the answer really to that question would be fundamentally the same. If one of those species, you had to manage a root issue, you'd have to manage the root issue. Uh, one doesn't necessarily act any differently than the other in, in its reason for its growth and root structure.
Matt, you concur?
Kevin's a landscape
I know, I know how to get a hold of Matt. See, Kevin, I can't find you as readily.
Kevin's a landscape architect, but yes, I, I do concur. I, I've seen the damage that palm tree roots can do, you can see it outside of City Council here. Uh, a root issue is a root issue and Shady Ladies do, oak trees do create leaf, leaf litter, there's, there's no denying that. But Shady Ladies create, create a staining litter that uh, kind of causes a damage that's not necessarily desirable in, in that environment.
Amy, Greg?
I just, uh, no, I'm just troubled by what um, Kevin said because we have live oaks throughout our community and we are in a nightmare situation trying to get the staining off the sidewalk because of the leaves. So I, I, I just don't understand, is this uh, live oak different from others?
No, again, the, the uh, live oak as, as a species goes generally acts the same. This is chosen for its vertical growth habits and, and other things. You know, we can go down here into this project and take a look and this, this one spot with this Black Olive is the, you know, forty-five days i- is doing this. We've got a number of oak trees, uh, really that surround the project, there's only a handful for the project that have been installed. Uh, and, and we are not seeing the same uh, staining and issue discoloration uh, in, in these other areas. And some of these are
The staining from the uh, Shady Lady comes from what?
It's, it's actually um, light and insect issue.
Well, don't we have that same problem with live oaks if they're not sprayed?
No, no. What, what happens
Aren't there worms or some, some kind of worms?
What happens is through the, through the insects uh, living on and in the tree and its digestion, it actually activates the tannins that are contained in the, if you will, the, the fluids, the juices of the Black Olive to a point that it concentrates it in this manner and that's what you're, that's what you see. So it's not, it's not leaf, it's not fruit, it's an insect issue, bottom line.
Do they need to be sprayed because of the insects?
You spray them, but they, they return, they come back. It's, it's again, another level of maintenance, you know, specifically to that issue.
In our community, we're facing exactly those things with the live oaks. With leaf for insects and the tannins that come down from their digestion, so. But you're the expert, that's why, I think that's why we suggested that this was a maintenance issue that we need to be addressed. Is there something besides a Shady Lady that we could consider besides a live oak?
Again, the, the, in the street tree selections we have here, it, it, there really isn't.
They're just limited?
It's very limited, it's just a, and again, it goes to the, the structure of the tree, the growth habits of the tree, slow-growing, strength of wood, et cetera. And again, very fitting in the community that is an oak hammock co- uh, community, naturally so.
Will you come clean our sidewalks?
Fred?
Well, I have two questions.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Amy, are you done? I'm sorry.
I'm just kidding, I'm just saying.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I said, I, you know, I, I defer to the expert, but that is not the experience that we've had in our community at all, what you're describing.
Yeah, and, and I come from a community where we're taking almost every live oak tree we can out of there because, and now there must be another species of oaks because the oak trees that I'm familiar seeing, they branch out real big and if you don't keep them trimmed, you got a big problem not only on the litter they create. And I guess the other question I have, and there's only one merchant here, but you know, what's going to happen is that's going to put the load on keeping the sidewalks clean on the merchants. And where that won't work, even if they all will do it, what about these sections of walk where it's not in front of a store, the city on, other things, you're going to have large areas where that stuff gets on it and it gets on your shoes and you track it and that.
Well, I can't speak to the installation of your community or, or others. And at the same time, I have seen oak trees placed in the wrong locations. You know, between two backflow preventers that are serving homes and, and they're only five feet apart. That, no tree belongs in that sort of situation, so I can't, I can't speak to the installation.
I've seen them by, I've seen them farther away from the edge of a driveway than your openings for the trees and I've seen the driveway heaved up, the sidewalks heaved up.
And again, I don't know that there's root barriers or other things, so again, I just can't speak to those installations.
That part, that part you probably are correct on. I'm, I'm as concerned about the litter that the trees create.
Well, it's the, you know, I, this is, this is something that, that we did spend a great deal of time with and, and not just because of landscape architecture, the profession, but also uh, Andy Powell who's sitting behind me to the right is telling me the same thing. Said, "We, we are going to use our best practices out here in the landscaping of, of this project uh, because we don't want to be fighting root issues and we don't want to be uh, you know, dealing with uh, an issue that again, any palm or any tree might, might bring with it." And so all I can say is that, uh, you know, we've, we followed that direction and, and thought this through and, and this is our recommendation.
So we are doing the root barriers down there?
Yes.
Greg?
No, go ahead, Mike.
And the oak tree would be the better choice because it's going to be narrower, it's not going to block signage on the buildings. The main prod- problem is just going to be the, the leaf dropping.
Right, and yeah, and again, for the examples we have growing up vertically, it has the space to grow, it's not growing up into and against buildings. And uh, as I understand, you know, the code and this is developing, even our signage is coming down in the blade signs and other things that are very fitting for this street and the visibility, uh, and these aren't side-by-side. So we'll oftentimes have three or four cars that are parallel parked between them. Uh, there's a lot of visibility, windows, if you will, into what's behind the, the street tree.
The leaf drop, is it once a year or multiple times a year?
No, there's a, there's a, a, a time of year where it'd be a little heavier, but you know, there's, there's always maintenance, there's always, you know, cleaning of the sidewalk, brooming things uh, off. I mean, that's going to be part
Pretty much April, isn't it?
It's uh, more of a springtime.
And is that something we could have in whoever's doing our landscaping down there? Have them clean up the leaves? I know they have like the vacuum things and stuff like that.
Yep.
We don't have a landscape contractor, obviously, for that area right now. And it's certainly something that we could write into a, a landscape specification to have them use a, a vacuum to sweep those areas. It's, it is certainly something we don't, uh, you know, want to have lying everywhere, obviously.
I think it should be like Paris and the shopkeepers should be out there.
Yeah.
Hang on a second, Fred. Greg, did you?
I just had a question for Matt. Yeah, I just had one question for Matt about the, the leaf litter. Is that going to affect, I know we've got all this whole sewage system underground, is that a concern for you or for that?
Truthfully, it was more of a concern in the, in the older configuration of the roadway. Uh, we had inlet bags that were made out of a filter fabric that collected those leaves. And so we had uh, Old Forty One on more of a frequency to change those out. Uh, this new design is, is much better with the pervious pavers and those things that'll, that the leaves seem to collect maybe in those parking stalls. So I think it'll be a little easier and a little easier to address through a maintenance contract, um, and just specify that someone utilize a leaf vacuum and specify the frequency. Uh, I've got folks that, you know, obviously will ensure that, that they're out there at the appropriate time.
Fred?
Well, the only comments I would make and have to see what Amy says, but my experience with the oak trees is that when they're doing this, it's, if you don't clean it daily, minimum daily, you're going to be in problems. It isn't going to be once a week and it's going to happen more than one time a year. And the oak trees I've seen, but this may be a different species, do tend to spread. But this may be better, a better species as far as that. So just be forewarned about that litter.
Thoughts, Matt?
I, I, I can't speak to the daily, I, I can tell you, we didn't have to clean the streets or we did not clean the, the leaf insert bags daily uh, in the previous configuration and Old Forty One was lined with oak trees. This species is different. Uh, it's obviously an oak tree, but it is, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, Kevin, it's a cathedral oak and you can see it in the shape. It is grown to, to, to grow as vertically as possible uh, and not spread out. And the, the reason is so that for future development or in a downtown environment, you can, you can allow the tree to thrive and not have to remove it prematurely and allow those buildings to be up close. It's kind of a, you know, a compromised tree, so to speak.
Well, I think that, you know, the structure of the tree is, is definitely preferable, I agree with that. Uh, but I, you know, it may be the case that we're not going to solve this problem with the Shady Lady either. It's the same problem. We have the insects and all I can say, we can call CDDs in your community and your community and our community and we'll see what they're doing. They're spraying them and they're cleaning the sidewalks, not just once a year. And it has this, and you can't even get it clean, it's still, it's just like that, it never comes up. But that, and I agree, it's the, what they explained to us was the tannin from the insects. But if we're going to have uh, stain from the Shady Lady, we might as well have stain from the oak tree, is my view, uh, and it's a better structure. And we hope that our expert is correct and if it isn't, you know, we'll have to de- deal with it. So I think we should reconsider personally, we can't vote on anything, right? But we can talk about the next meeting.
Yeah, no, I agree and I'm just looking at the clock, it's five oh nine. How much more of this presentation, because then we obviously want to get into the economics and financial matters of this too.
We have a couple of issues in the presentation, I can ask the folks to speak a little quicker, but I'd like to bring Mr. Wallwork up uh, from, for the, to speak about the Terry Street Roundabout and then I would like to have Andy address uh, something for Council's consideration on some savings on the bridge design and show a cross-section. So if, if we could move through those two.
And Mr. Mayor, if I might, if I, if I might, I had suggested for a future workshop, like on June fifteenth, that we actually hold that for and just leave it blank.
Okay.
In case we don't finish today on June fifteenth.
Right.
If we need to, we can come back and do, and finish up with financials.
No, that's, that's, that's fantastic and we'll probably still be discussing the trees by then too, so. Is my guess, but.
Okay, thank you. Michael Wallwork, I'm the Roundabout Guy. And uh, I got asked to talk about the Terry Street Roundabout.
What's your nickname before we start?
Mr. Roundabout.
Yeah, Mick, Mick Dundee or something, anyway, Mr. Roundabout, okay.
I've had various ones.
Welcome back, welcome back.
Thank you. Anyway, I, over the last few months, we've gone through many iterations with the Terry Street Roundabout and we've been dropping lanes, adding lanes and moving it all around the place to minimize the con- the impacts. And so we've ba- basically come down to a one-lane roundabout with a turn lane on every leg, which is basically what we had our original design, but it's a little bit off-center and we'll, we'll go in that in a minute. Um, the beauty of the Ra- uh, the roundabout, why I like it and why so many communities are using them is it creates a gateway into your development or into your city. And so that's, it's a major benefit of the roundabout there. Um, we designed it to accommodate the existing traffic before construction started with some spare capacity. And once this project's finished, you heard all about the changes that are already coming, um, there will be some changes in the traffic patterns and the traffic volumes and we're hopefully have accommodated just about everything that we can think of, um, with, without making any bigger and having bigger right-of-way impacts. Um, the, it's going to be a lot safer for everybody, right? And, and I've seen a lot of pedestrians and bicycles out there and it, and, you know, they've got to cross four or six lanes every time they cross one leg of that roundabout. With the roundabout, they're down to three lanes only, which, and, and at lower speeds, so it's going to certainly help the pedestrians um, around there. And there is some right-of-way and um, I'll show you where that is now. But this is the recommended design, it's a one-lane roundabout, it has a right-turn lane on um, each leg. Um, so there's Terry Street West, a right turn there, there's a right turn here, one here, and on, on um, north, that's a left-turn lane with a through right because it's a very heavy left-right from the east to the north. And that's why there's a little difference in there. It was designed to accommodate um, the WB sixty-two, sixty-five trucks, which are the fairly large trucks to make all the turn uh, movements uh, around the roundabout. Um, we've squeezed the design, so now instead of a cut, two or three feet of clearance, the trucks now only have about the trucks now only have about one foot eighteen inches to the edge of gutter. But the gutter is still spare space, right? So they can use it if they wish to. But in the, going through all these iterations, we ended up with three specific control points. One is the corner of this building up here. It's on the northwest corner, the right-of-way on this corner here. Then we had the gas tanks and vents on this corner here. And that created a real problem, and we really had to move the roundabout off-center to be able to fit that in. And that's why you've got a bit of a skew down in here and so forth. So we had to, we just managed to miss all of those points, barely, okay? And as a result, we need some right-of-way, which is the yellow areas on all four corners. But I managed to cut this side down to the minimum amounts and have it, you know, more on that side. So that was the, what I call the compromised design, where, you know, it's safe for everyone. It accommodates the large trucks at a low speed, and we've avoided the three major areas of concern. And one of the things that's important, was important to me and others, was that there's a lot of schoolchildren using this intersection. And so, from the school, you know, starting our project, we've got a ten-foot sidewalk all the way around across here and around the corner here. So this is the major area where all the pedestrians, where the, and I saw the schoolchildren one day. There are a large number of them, and so that's why we've gone for the ten-foot wide sidewalk and make them a little better for them. To meet ADA requirements, we've got a two-foot separation here, and that will help keep those children a little bit further away from the roadway and make it a little bit more comfortable for all pedestrians to use it. There was one thing, we tried various options on this driveway here because that crosswalk there ended up right in the middle of the existing driveway. And I, I was not willing to move that crosswalk way down to here on the other side of the existing driveway because it moves the pedestrian too far away from the roundabout and where the vehicles are going much faster. And so, the reason why we're moving that driveway is to keep the pedestrian crossing up close to the roundabout where the vehicle speeds are low. And that does come at the expense of relocating that driveway. But, you know, everything was done for very specific reasons, and, and that was the final recommended design. Thank you.
Amy?
I don't think I understand the left turns. How do they work?
Okay. This is just like a normal signalized intersection that's out there now. When you're coming down, this is the left-turn lane at the signal. And with a roundabout, it's exactly the same thing. That's a left-turn lane. You come down, and you want to make a left turn to East Terry. So you come down here, you go around the roundabout, you come around here, and you just go on down there. So you're still making the left turn from the same lane, basically, but now you have to go around this lump of concrete to be able to complete your turn.
There are two lanes approaching and...
Yeah, so, yeah, it's just like a traffic light. You have a left-turn lane.
If there's somebody that's going left and somebody that wants to go straight...
Yeah, they are in this lane.
And how do you, how do they decide who goes in first?
Well, you know, you can see back here, we, just like a signalized intersection. When you come up to a signalized intersection, you have painted arrows in the lane telling you, you know, which lane you should go into. Also, the law says, if you want to make a left turn, you must be in the leftmost lane, right? You don't have a choice by law, right? So we just put the markings in just to indicate to people, this is a left-turn-only lane, and this is the through-right lane over here. I've reinforced that so that if someone's making the left turn and they decided to go straight forward, it's hard to see, but we've got double-lane markings around here with some hatching in between to, you know, make sure that people keep doing their left turn and don't try and cut across and cut someone off that's in the through lane.
But, but how do, how do you determine the alternating? If two cars approach at the same time, how do you decide who goes first into the roundabout?
If they're coming from two different directions?
No, I think the confusion is, you said that this is one lane around.
If you don't, don't mind, Michael. This is a, this is a hybrid roundabout, and this is the only place where you have a two-lane condition. This is the left-hand turn. It's marked here. If you're coming straight, you're here.
So from this side, there's only one lane coming into that also? And then you just, you have to choose a lane once you get in there? You're starting back here, and there's one, there's one lane right there?
There's, there's two lanes. And so, if you're, if you're going to make a left, like, like you were coming into an intersection...
All right, so you're there, and now another car's on the other side, and he wants to go straight. You're side by side, then what do you do?
You're side by side, and he stays, you stay side by side. He comes through here.
There's two lanes on the west side of the circle.
Oh, there's two lanes?
It's like Williams...
Sorry, that's, that's why I jumped in. I knew that.
Yeah, you're single lane. That's what was confusing.
That's the only side with double.
Starting at that point there, we've got a double-lane marking with the hatching in between. So that double lane comes all the way, and it goes this way, and it comes down here. So that was the way to sort of keep people in their lanes.
I know we want to take a quick...
Yeah, Greg, go ahead.
Just a quick thing. Matt made the comment, that's the only lane. It appears that the one directly across, the directly across does the same thing, and so there's the one below. The only one, I mean, it looks like they all can go left.
Well, on three legs, right, we have a through-left lane. There, through-left, through-left. This one is different, and that's because the traffic pattern, the left turn is very heavy from the north. It is not heavy on the other three legs.
Down here? Fred?
I was going to ask, in this revised design, have we lost anything in the way of throughput, speed of being able to go through, which would mean you're not, you're going to lose capacity? Are we just as good now with what we had before?
There is no change to the capacity at all, right? As I said, we're accommodating the existing traffic before construction, and we designed it so there is some spare capacity built into that for future, future growth in the future. And then, the other thing that happens, too, is that as people get accustomed to driving the roundabout, after a few weeks, you'll find that they're picking smaller gaps than they did in the first couple of weeks, and that increases your capacity. But I don't know how aggressive your drivers are, so we are a little bit on the conservative side. And if your drivers turn out more aggressive, you get more capacity.
So I, so this, this particular revised roundabout, I can go through it at the same speed I could have gone through the original one?
With the original roundabout design, yes. And, and the speed, you'll go through there, and pretty well, everyone else, it was going to be around fifteen to twenty mile an hour. So if you're a pretend racing car driver, you can get a little faster. But not, not very much faster.
Very good.
Okay. Anybody else? Great, thank you. Come on down. How you doing?
Good afternoon. I'm Vince Saliowskis with High Span's Engineering. I'm the bridge engineer for the project.
Welcome.
Thank you. As, as most of you are aware, the original designs for the bridge included widening it, using girders and including piles in the river, or not including piles in the river, to provide wider sidewalks, almost a multi-use path across the river. And it was not included in phase-one funding for the project because the budget for that was about $2.4 million. We've looked at three different options for trying to accommodate a wider bridge, including putting piles in the river and using a very deep, strong structural beam. But in the end, the budget really still comes in at about $2.4 million for that. So what, what we've done currently in order to try and meet a $1 million budget for the bridge and still meet the project goals of creating a transparent barrier, providing a greater visibility to the river, encouraging pedestrians to use the sidewalk, and still provide a safe pathway for vehicles, of course, is looked at not widening the bridge as much, actually not widening it at all is one of the options, and creating eight-foot sidewalks on both the northbound and the southbound sidewalks. We are still refining this design to possibly cantilever the sidewalk and hand railing off of the existing bridge to maybe gain one more foot and a nine-foot sidewalk on both sides. We haven't completed that analysis yet, but we feel that this option will meet the $1 million budget for creating a transparent barrier, creating visual access to the river, and still creating a wider sidewalk than we have existing, encouraging pedestrians and strollers to be able to use the bridge comfortably. So are there any questions about the bridge?
Just one quick question. When we met at one of the workshops, you had what I consider to be inspirational designs for the size of the bridges to look at, how. Are we still going there, or are we getting industrial strength bureaucratic?
No, we, we still have the columns that are going to support the light poles, including the light poles on the structure, and those will have architectural treatment on them. And if we do cantilever over the bridge by about a foot, we can do something with the coping or the side fascia of the bridge as well. But the, the very original concept that we showed had a full-depth architectural beam on the outside. And that, that is where we, how we got to that $2.4 million. So this one will have aesthetic features to the side of it, but they won't be as prominent as that original drawing.
Thank you.
Greg?
No?
Fred?
Aren't they now looking at using cable railings?
Yes, we're looking, we always, we're looking at a very transparent handrail that uses stainless steel cables, correct.
What's the spacing roughly? Is it six inches, maybe?
About four inches, but because the cable is stainless steel, and I think it's three-eighths of an inch thick, it's very transparent.
Do, do, I, I can see that, obviously, but do you, any better or other picture of what they actually look like?
We, the downtown basin in Fort Myers, downtown, we were part of that project and the design of it. And, and those are one of the pictures that we've been using to represent what, how transparent this railing is. It's, it's almost, I'm not going to say invisible, but it's almost invisible. And the coatings that we're going to use for the posts will make it, you know, somewhat more transparent as well. So if, if you can picture that railing downtown Fort Myers in the basin, right next to the Klusatschi River, that's somewhat similar to what this will look like.
Could we just make sure by, at June fifteenth, Carl, we have a picture of that or somebody, so we can...
We're going to have a mock-up, mock-up made of the railing because we're currently under, getting ready to produce a railing for Oak Creek. So I'm going to have a mock-up made, and we'll bring that mock-up to the meeting so everybody can see it.
Great, thank you.
Is it possible that instead of them being four foot center to center, they could be six inches? Because that would make it a lot more transparent?
That, that's a code issue. The, the spacing of the, of the members has to be such that a child's head or can't fit through. So there, there is a code issue with that, the spacing on the, on the cables. But some of it is curved, so it will have an appearance of, a different appearance at, at different heights of the railing. But that is a code issue that we have to comply with.
So let me throw this out there. You know, we're looking for safety, we're looking for functionality, but, and maybe I'm alone with this thought. I think we're also looking to make a statement there, right?
Yes.
So we kind of want to have it look grand, so I'd really like to see what we're talking about.
Okay, yeah, the, like I said, the columns will give us opportunity to, for architectural treatment, the lighting that's going to be above the bridge, and we'll prepare some more graphics for the next meeting.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Anybody else? Any other questions? Okay. Matt Feeny, who's next? In our four minutes. Five twenty-six, Matt, just so you know.
I'm going to bring Tom Barber up to talk about the drainage system and the, and the costs and the implications.
Great, thank you. Tom, welcome. How are you?
Good, how are you? Tom Barber, Agnelli Barber, Bredge. I'll keep it brief. The black boundary shown on, on this exhibit is the conceptual permit boundary that we got with the Southwater Water Management District. The purple boundary is the drainage basin boundary. The yellow infrastructure here shows the, the drainage pipe backbone, if you will, that has three separate outfalls into the Imperial River to the north and one outfall to Oak Creek to the south. Here's an example of the exhibit of the pervious pavers and the rock trench system that's being utilized. And this is another example of the, of the rock trench system. It has a total of 120 acre, 121 acre inches of volume available. The credits associated with the entire system are 243 kilograms per year of nitrogen and 43 kilograms per year of phosphorus. And that equates to the amount of nutrient removal that will be realized with the system. And it, it amounts to, the, the construction of this system is about $6.33 million. And just as an example, here's a one-acre parcel roughly in the downtown area. And that one-acre parcel, given its existing condition of it's already developed, well, it's, it already has some impervious area on it right now. Once it's redeveloped, it'll utilize about 1% of the available credits. If we took into account, if we had a parcel that was not developed, that was just raw land, and developed that to 95% impervious, it would take about 2% of the available credits. If you have any questions for me?
Amy, Greg? Wonderful, thank you.
Can I just call, in interest of time, maybe Tom can come back for the next meeting as well, and we can talk about some of the financial aspects of it, as well as how the credits work, because we don't have time tonight.
Right, we, we can arrange for that, absolutely.
And some more information on the trees, for anybody that came in late.
Okay, so we are finished. The only thing we have not completed, obviously, we want to go back and talk a little bit more about drainage. But financially, that, that aspect is an important one, and I'd recommend in the next meeting, we do that on the fifteenth.
Great.
But we are, we are complete here at this point.
Wonderful, wonderful, and Fred, you have another comment?
Yeah, I just want to give the design team a thought, and I'm piggybacking on what the mayor said about that handrails were supposed to be something great and spectacular. I've seen, instead of cables, and cables is not a bad solution, you would have post, you'd have a top rail, but you'd have basically tempered plate glass between the posts. So you got real clear vision. So that, now that may cost more money, but we saved 1.4 million, so you might be able to dig up a little bit more. I, I would at least look into it and see how it would cost and all that.
Great. Any other comments? Okay, we'll move along to public comment. Any public comments on this workshop?
Yeah, you're going to have trees, you're going to have, trees are dirty. That's my job, picking up and cleaning up after all the trees at Hickory Boulevard. It keeps me busy. Or you have concrete.
We can move you downtown, Rick.
Yeah, I can move, yeah, why not? Heck, I could double my money. You wouldn't pay me anyways, but I wouldn't take your money. Either that, or you're going to have nothing but concrete. And it's awful hot down here in concrete in the summertime. We want the trees, we, we need the vegetation, we need the fresh air that they create. And it seems like the oak tree is, is going to be, is a different variety oak that goes straight up rather than straight out like the, the ones you see more, I guess, in your neighborhood. They go, they really get big, you know, those oak trees, but if they go up, it'll be all right. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Anybody else with public comment? Okay, this workshop is adjourned. And I, it's 5:32. Do we want to say 5:35? 5:35, we'll start our meeting.